Okay, it is 6:00 PM. We'll call the county board meeting for January 4th and for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment. Silent.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Roll call shows 20 supervisors present, one absent.
Okay. At this time, we would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Supervisor Hunt.
Flader seconds.
Okay. Supervisor Hunt and Jim Flader. Any further discussion? Then, ready for the... Green to approve, red to disapprove.
20 yes, zero no.
Agenda is approved. Members of the... Members of the public wishing to be heard, and five minutes. Jan Morrow, come up here.
Yes, I'm Jan Morrow, and a lot of you guys do know me, but I'm not concerned with farming tonight. We're having problems with the social department, Social Service Department, in Chippewa County. Three and a half years ago, our grandchildren from Freeborn County, Minnesota, were taken away from their mother. And we immediately tried to get custody of these kids. But it drug on and drug on and drug up, of course, with COVID and everything. But, um, anyway, it took just... Just a year ago, last February, before they finally come out and do a home visit. You know, because, again, we tried and tried to get custody of these kids. And it took months later before we were able to finally get the report to see if we could get custody of these kids or not. We'd call Freeborn County, and we'd call Chippewa County, and one would say it's their problem, and the other one would say, you know, Chippewa County'd say, "Well, you gotta get a hold of Freeborn County." They'd tell us Chippewa County's gotta release a report. But it took months before we were finally able to get the report. And, of course, we were turned down to get custody of these kids. We were trying, there was five kids were taken away, and we were trying to get, you know, my one son wanted one child, and we were trying for the other three. One is living with his other grandmother now in Freeborn County. The other ones are in foster care. They've been in foster care for three and a half years now. And we, you know, after we were turned down, we kept trying to get Chippewa County to come back out and inspect our home. They kept turning us down. And we don't understand, it was Ashley Broat that did the report. And we do not understand why in the world this woman would not give us a second chance for us to try to get our grandkids. But she kept turning us down and turning us down. And Freeborn County, you know, they wouldn't do it. These kids have spent three and a half years in foster care. And out of these, the first two years, they wouldn't even let us see these kids. Finally, a year and a half ago, they were finally able to see us. But we don't understand, you know, after Chippewa County told us, the vast majority of time, they try to get kids placed with somebody from their family. Why in the world we were turned down, we still don't understand. And I wish you people would approach Ashley Broat and tell her Jan Morrow would sure like a chance to try to get custody of her grandkids yet. And why this woman refuses to give us another try, we have no idea. So I sure wish all you people out here would put pressure on this woman to try to give us a second chance. These kids, three and a half years, the one daughter lives with another grandmother. The other kids, these four kids have been in social, have been a foster parent this many mon... this many months. We don't understand why in the world we can't get a second chance. Thank you.
Seeing no other names, we will move on to the consent agenda. I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Supervisor Omar.
Omar, and the second.
Sidelet.
Those in favor, press the green button, disapprove red.
20 yes, zero no.
Okay. All right. We will move on to the... Agenda is approved, okay. We will move on to the reports, and we have quite an honor tonight. We moved on to National Foundation for Women's Legislators' Woman of Excellence Award, and we have one of our very own Chippewa County supervisors, Ms. Hives. Carrie, would you like to come up and... Carrie, I know you've already received this.
Um, I just, this was a surprise to me. The National Foundation for Women's Legislators, they have our chapter here in Wisconsin as well, so our local state director, Lisa Subec, nominated me, and our former Senator Kath... Kath... Kathy Bernier was there as well, and so she was excited to see, "Oh, oh, she's my Chippewa County girl." So, yeah, so it was quite a surprise, and, um, yeah, so, thank you. I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, moving on to business items. Resolution to approve opioid settlement funds guidelines.
Resolution number 1-23, resolution to approve guidelines and procedures for allocating opioid settlement funds. Now therefore be it resolved that Chippewa County Board of Supervisors hereby approve the attached document titled Guidelines and Procedures for Allocating Opioid Funds, and be it further resolved that the County Board also approves the attached opioid fund request form as is or as may be amended by the county administrator, and said form shall be completed by any applicant requesting opioid litigation settlement funds for opioid abatement projects forwarded to the County Board by the Executive Committee.
I would seek a motion to approve.
Supervisor Bergeron, motion to approve.
Okay, Bergeron, approve, second.
Visual, second.
Visual, okay, discussion.
Thanks, Chair. First of all, good evening, everybody. Happy New Year for the people at home. My name's Randy Schultz, I'm the Chippewa County Administrator. So just a little background on this, I know we've, you guys have heard a lot about this, but this is really to bring the process forward on how the County Board will decide how the spend, the funds we're going to receive for the opioid litigation settlement. So we did, we do know how much we're getting for the first rounds of settlement, it's about 1.96 million. Then after you take the lawyer's fees off and deal with what the state's getting, we're going to get about 1.5. Part of that is, we talked a lot about securitization, which really was a mechanism to get your money upfront. Talking with the WCA, they're running into an issue with that because there's an act that was passed by the state legislature that doesn't allow funds to be spent on anything else except for opioid mitigation, which makes sense. But if we went, if we go down this path, you're actually using some of the money for the settlement because you have to pay for the securitization. So we don't know where that's going to end or what's going to happen with that, but for right now, that's kind of on the back burner. We also found out that there's another settlement that just occurred, and our estimated revenues we're going to receive from that is about 1.2 million. So this whole guideline would cover any settlement for opioid funds, so we don't know exactly everything that's out there. Nobody seems to be able to give us a good answer because there's lawsuits all over the place on this, but that's what we're aware of right now. So to use the funds, again, we talked about Act 57, it was called, and they do have that you have to put in a segregated account, and that there is a reference, it's called Exhibit E, what you hear a lot about, that's really what we can spend the money on. So moving forward, the recommendation for the criteria, criteria to use opioid funds is number one, is the funds shall be allocated for projects, programs that comply with Exhibit E listed in opioid Act 57, that's what we have to follow. Funds may be allocated for current and new projects, programs that are evidence-based, measurable, and proven to be effective in reducing addiction. We do everything evidence-based, our DHS does that, CGS does that, so we're really, obviously, you have to be able to measure if something is working. One thing we did find out lately is we can't displace any money. So if we have a program that we're paying for currently with levy, we can't substitute this for levy and use that levy someplace else. That's not atypical on some of these agreements, especially funding to try to reduce the effects of, in this case, the opioid. So what they're really trying to say is, you know, you can't use this money and then kind of keep the level even, this is to enhance the efforts you're currently doing. So we just found that out. So the county administrators' recommendations, the first one, the Chippewa County Board will decide whether to receive the opioid funds by securitization, just talked about that, obviously. Establishing opioid work group, we have started meeting and talking about areas that they feel they can utilize the funds in, and these are really the departments that deal with that. And they do have, they, a lot of the department heads and staff belong to other committees outside of these committees, obviously, and they have people there that have life experiences, and they'll take that and get feedback from them during this whole process. So number three, request and approve utilization, utilize opioid funds annually during the normal budget process. This is going to go on for several years, we talked about it, there's different years for the settlements. With the new ones we just saw, there's additional different years, some are five years, some are 10 years, some are 18 years. So it will be an ongoing process, and we obviously probably won't get the money all upfront, especially with the issue with the securitization. So it'd just be a part of our normal budget process, and then I'll kind of walk through that. So all departments requesting to use opioid funds will need to fill out an opioid fund request by April 15th. It would be a form that is attached on here. The form will need to be completed and reviewed with the policy committee each year by June 15th in order for the fund to be approved and allocated in the next year's budget. So what we added, number five, we added at the executive committee, which was brought up that really, I think, was a hole, but I think this really kind of solves that. So the county administrator will provide a report to the County Board annually in May, so we'll get the requests in April, bring a report in May, and really, the purpose of the report is so everybody on those committees, those policy committees can hear what the County Board thinks. You're not going to take action, you're not going to do any of those types of things, but everybody that's here has an opportunity to see what the full program looks like for that year and can give feedback to those committees before it goes to the committee. And then it'll go to the committee in April, no, it'll come to me in April, go to committees in June, and then that will get it into the budget process. So then the county administrator will receive all opioid fund request forms and policy committee feedback, and we'll do this just during the normal budget process, and then we'll have to incorporate that into the next year's budget. The first utilization of opioid funds during this process will be the 2024 budget. There will be a limited amount of opioid funds available each year, we just talked about. So opioid funds received in one budget year cannot be expended until the subsequent budget year. We do the same thing with our sales tax, we don't spend the money, we don't anticipate it, we actually know it. And this helps, this really helps here because we're not really sure, you know, they talked about companies going bankrupt and having those concerns, this way we will know the money we have available before we take any action. I think that's a good, good way to do it. In the event the request to use opioid funds is received outside the normal budget process, county minister will bring a separate resolution. We didn't want to tie us to that, if we absolutely had something that we feel could be utilized, we still would obviously have to bring that to the County Board, but that would be outside the budget process. We don't anticipate that once we get going, but we do know of something currently that we'll be bringing forward for your, to see if you're willing to spend some money on that. So the opioid funds will deposit in a segregated account, that's required. County Minister will include opioid program service projects as part of the next year's budget proposal. So I'll point these out as, when, you know, when I bring the budget forward and I have points of emphasis and all that, we'll show exactly what is in the budget. And then as far as the financial report, that would be just part of the normal county finance director's report as she goes through each year. So you'll see updates on that and see exactly where that's at. That's kind of the idea of the process, so we're just looking if there's anything, any holes we missed or anything in addition that the County Board would want to see, or any feedback?
Any questions or comments?
Randy, have you gotten any?
Push your button.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, there we go.
Just came from teaching class. Do they anticipate this to be roughly the same amount every year, or is it just so up in the air right now that they don't know?
Well, we got that schedule, that PMI schedule for the first go-around, and it really varies on who would, what, who the settlement's with, like Johnson &amp; Johnson, I think they're over, are they over the 18-year?
No.
What's, they're the nine-year, it's, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it, yeah, so it's not uniform. They put a schedule together anticipating what we'll get. Their concern was, they don't know if some of these companies are going to go bankrupt or not. There is another settlement we just heard about on Monday of the companies that did go bankrupt, we're going to get some of that money because they still got to pay some of their creditors. So we will receive some money in that process too. So, yeah, it's going to kind of be all over the place.
Anyone else?
Buckles on there.
I know, I don't know what happened. He doesn't like you.
You took me off.
What? You're being censored. Sorry, Buck.
Number five, okay, number four, I'd just like a little clarification.
Okay.
Well, what I'm thinking is, it says that the committees that are involved with these different programs will be reviewing it. But there's possibly a lot of them that won't be going through any committees other than maybe the executive committee?
No, it's all going to go through the budget process, so unless there's, unless it's CJ directly reports to that committee, to the executive committee and doesn't have another policy committee, it would only go to exec and then come forward, but it's whoever that department reports to as a policy committee would go through the committee first. And really, the purpose to get it to me by April 15th, see what they put on there to make sure it's covered under that exhibit, make sure they're not trying to utilize funds that they can't cover or displacing funds, and that's, we haven't had that conversation, we just found out about that not too long ago, so we'll have to have that discussion too.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, up here we can vote.
Wait, this one?
Not yet?
No.
Not yet?
I lost the screen.
Okay, to approve, push your green button, disapprove, red.
You're good.
Okay, the vote?
20 yes, zero no.
Okay, resolution passes. Okay, resolution 223 to authorize the sale of highway property in the city of Chippewa Falls. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Supervisor Steele.
Erickson will second that.
Discussion.
I got Brian Kelly here, he'll explain our highway.
I didn't read it. Nope, I didn't.
Might as well.
Okay.
Resolution number 2-23, resolution to authorize the sale of highway department property in the city of Chippewa Falls. Now therefore be it resolved that the property listed above no longer has value for highway purposes, and therefore the county highway commissioner is authorized to sell the property for fair market value to the current owner of the adjacent parcel, Four Sisters, Inc., pursuant to Statute 83.08, sub 4, Wisconsin statutes, and be it further resolved that the corporation councils authorized to draft the deeds, contracts, and other documents as needed to sell the property, and the county clerk and county administrator are authorized to sign the deeds and all other sale documents to effectuate the sale, and be it further resolved that the funds from the sale of the property be deposited into the highway funds as required by 83.08, 4, Wisconsin statutes, and the expenses incurred in connection with the sale be paid from the same fund forwarded to the County Board by the Highway Committee.
Okay.
Okay, well, a couple of years ago, we heard from the city that they were going to be approving the area of Marshall Street, and with a full block of frontage, the highway department would be responsible for a really healthy assessment, which, being at the top of the hill and not really anything we needed, you know, we reached out to the property owner adjacent to us, asking if they would support petitioning the city to vacate that rather than paying the assessment. So they agreed to that, but they preferred to take ownership of the Marshall Street paving and be able to expand their parking lot. Our buildings are way down the hill from there, so it made sense to us, talked to corp council, and just to cover all our bases, we decided to treat it like a highway, since it's owned by the highway department and technically used for highway purposes, or could be, so we needed to sell that at fair market value to an adjacent property owner. We had a appraisal done, unfortunately, the appraisal's the most expensive part of the whole thing, it's $500, and the fair market value, since it's such a small parcel and not really valuable to anybody else, is only $270, so property owners happy to pay that to obtain the property, and we're just going to give each other a couple little easements just to make sure we can both get on each other's property that's not being transferred to get in and out of some buildings and different things, so that's all on the exhibits. And answer any questions, if you have any.
Questions or discussion? Okay, thanks, man. All right, then we will move to the vote to approve, you press green, disapprove, red.
20 yes, zero no. Resolution number 3-23, resolution to ratify the winter storm county disaster proclamation. Now therefore be it resolved that the attached December 16th, 2022 county disaster proclamation is hereby ratified and the emergency powers available under Section 323.144B, Wisconsin statute, shall remain in effect during the time emergency conditions exist or are likely to exist. Approve this 10th day of January 2022 by the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Check out. Okay. All right, discussion.
Thanks, Chair. This resolution is just to ratify the emergency proclamation on the December 14th, 2022 storm. Originally, the state wasn't going to designate this as a disaster, they said it wasn't a ice event, which, I don't know how you can say that, but originally, they did not, or it wasn't a record snowstorm, that's kind of the two criteria. Since then, they have changed their mind, so it's really good we did declare that emergency. And what it does is it frees up money for municipalities and county to go after, to recoup some of the costs for some of these issues that happened, so that's really the reason behind it.
Any questions? Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, okay. Yes.
Any other?
Okay. Hearing none, we will call the vote to approve, press green, to disapprove, press red.
20 yes, zero no.
Okay, resolution passes. Then we will move on to number four, ordinance.
This is a second reading.
Leslie is here, but she did such a fantastic job the first time around. She's available if there's any questions, otherwise, if there isn't, we're ready for the vote.
Okay, any discussion? All right, to approve, you press your green, and to disapprove, red. Oh, wait a minute, we, do we need a motion?
Oh, yep.
We did. I was right. Need a motion to approve?
I just want to make that motion.
Supervisor Hives, is her second. Supervisor Omar. Any other discussion? Okay. Then we will vote green to approve, red to disapprove.
20 yes, zero no.
All righty.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, all.
Okay, so we will go to ordinance 123, this, do not. First reading.
So this ordinance is to match the resolution that the County Board passed, 64, 2022, and what this does is it takes the emergency management director's position away from myself as a, it's not a department head any longer, and then it declares emergency management director as the county's head of emergency management, which is required, we should have probably had that in there all along. That's only two changes.
Any questions? We are good then, since we don't vote on this? Nope, nope, it's first reading. Okay. We'll then, then items for future consideration, if you have items for upcoming reading, make sure you get it to myself or one of your executive members.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to see a report on the spring roll-in situation at the February board meeting from the highway commissioner. Thank you.
All righty. Seeing no other. To a motion to adjourn.
Erickson will make that motion.
Who wants to steal? Is there a second?
Schmidt seconds.
Flader was second. Little levity.